Hello.
Okay, I'd like to start the meeting. It's two o'clock. I follow this meeting to order.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Anything items too late for the agenda? Okay. Any public comment you know of?
Nobody on mine.
Okay. Anybody else here? Okay, business items, new items, new business. Looking into twenty twenty-three preliminary budget document, that's why we're here. So.
Okay, thank you. So I will just start in to give you overview about the budget process. I also want to take this opportunity to thank all managers, ex-republic, this management team, public services directors, and the chief teams are taking their time and putting this together. So how it's in my favorite director and the LT also they had meetings with Wendy and Rob also myself. All of that came to together within our new system in your view, so that is became alive on the twenty-sixth of September, so we also have that going further. Right, going forward, it will be easier to navigate in terms of the project, in terms of the budget adjustment and such. So all of that numbers came together, of course, the magic doesn't happen for to make any decisions. So then Wendy and Tim and I got together, I believe that was Friday, we looked at everything and we made some decisions that areas where could we afford to cut. Considering that we do have enough resources, so you will also see that in this budget document, changes in operations as well. And also you will see some of the areas that when you see a percentage, you'll be like, hey, that's a big percentage. For instance, when it comes to, yeah, that's five fifty-five percent. But also, as you know, it's a very new department. When you started, you didn't know what we would need going forward, and that's how we are going to try to establish there. So that's in a nutshell, and also we looked at our historical data and to compare those numbers, what we have today, what we have before, and how those numbers kind of balance each other out. So that's where we are today, and we're happy to present you this preliminary budget. And of course, this you as the board of trustees, we want you to have involvement in this process. This budget also belongs to the board of trustees for, and we are open for your suggestions while we're reviewing it. It will be more a work session than a presentation and talking with you. So, and I know that you're enjoying my accent and talking about all of this, but I know you want to actually get to the need and start talking about the budget. So I would have asked the right degree and also the correct app to to actually start talking about the budget. And I'm glad to note that last night, I know it's a good thing, Randy got a good night's sleep, so.
Yay!
Everyone ever comes from my sleep, so.
No, yeah.
Before we get started, I'd like to just congratulate, put this thing together. This is really an excellent document about how we're organizing the library, who does what and where, talk about the various direct efforts. And that can I just really appreciate having that information, it's great.
Yes, thank you. All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, board members. Thank you for fitting an extra meeting into a day that's going to be quite long. But I believe breaking the budget discussion out into a separate meeting like this is really going to be beneficial for everybody. I believe you all have met Nicola Sapp, she is standing right behind you. She and I, one, I want to say thank you to her for all of her insights and assistance in helping us spare us through previous information and into what we're presenting you today. Our objective, after getting some feedback from the board, was to try to present a document that was a little bit more digestible, maybe not with as much flow and really be able to allow you all to get down into the details a little bit more and become active in the final budget process. Maybe a little bit more than, so that meant moving deadlines out just a little bit from the original kind of deadline date of early part of October. And obviously, you know, it's the first year of doing this, so it will get smoother into next year and year after, so we've learned a ton. And, but I did want to say thank you to Nicola, sorry, personally for all of her help to me. So the first section, as you can see, is addressing our revenue. We, as I mentioned at our October seventh meeting, we were looking at showing our revenue dollars, especially the property tax coming to the district, allocating that slightly different than it had been before, meaning that all the, all the money from property taxes flowed directly into the general fund, and then it would be allocated out as an expense of general fund and then revenue to the self-insurance fund and the capital fund. And I think I mentioned that too, that we thought it might be a little less confusing for the taxpayer. He doesn't necessarily know to go down and look to see, hey, there's expenses coming out of one fund to move it over to another. And they may have gotten the impression that we had more revenue than we do. So that was the main driving force in breaking this out. So when I present the resolution for adopting the budget and the way we're pulling the property tax into the district, that will be delineated in the verbiage for that resolution. But as you can see, so the special self-insurance fund, if you look back at our previous budget documents, as far as I know, that was never budgeted for in the budget process. It was kind of put into our interdepartmental fund or a department, it's kind of a subdepartment. And I'll talk a little bit more about some changes we've made on that to kind of simplify what's going in there and kind of clearly draw lines on who's responsible for the dollars in that, in that particular department. Because as it suggests, it doesn't, it kind of covers the whole district. So there really isn't, other than finance, kind of roping it in, anybody really responsible for that, so that's a little clearer now. So obviously, the bulk of our revenue is going to go to the, to the general fund, because that's, that is our operating fund. Self-insurance fund, that was basically, the number on that was determined by what the insurance company recently quoted as for what our costs would be this next year. And the piece of it that PPLD would be responsible for, that's what we're going to cover with property tax. And then the capital fund, that's, that's from joint work from, from facilities, IT, creative services, basically feeding information over to me and Tiaman and, and obviously the board. Say this is what we anticipate our spending for capital will need to be for this next year. I will add that they really sharpened their pencils, not that they haven't done that before, but we really did push them on this year's budget because of our inflation and some of the cost constraints. Thinking we're going to see this next year, to really sharpen their pencils and bring it down to these are the, what, these are the things that we really need to do this next year. So basically, they got the highest per. So our total tax is expected, our total revenue expected from taxes is about thirty-seven million. Other operating revenue, it's about two million for a total of thirty-nine million. One other thing I want to point out on this page is probably different than what you've seen before is we made a point to break out what our intergovernmental funding is. All of that is, is kind of special, it's not, property tax, obviously, it's not in that section. But for instance, E-rate, you've probably all heard us talk about E-rate, that is a government program that reverses us because of where our main branch is located. It's based on the public school systems, lunch assistance program, and how many kids have that? So that puts us in their highest category, which is eighty percent. And so that would represent us getting eighty percent of our spend back on the expense side. Most of it, if not all of it, in the IT. And so there, it's a, it's kind of an arduous process that we go through every year to submit those dollars and get them approved and split a budget. And so anyway, that's, yeah.
So the way that the E-rate program works, that it like tiers, so like you get eighty percent because of the tier? Or is that strictly like a correlation directly to the FL, FRE, or FRL numbers of District eleven?
Uh, yeah, it, it does tie back into their headcount, but only from a student perspective. And from what I remember, it is based on students that are tied into their lunch.
Right, so, so the concern that I have is with FF passing. We're going to, they're going to see reduced number of FRL applications put in, that's what we saw during COVID.
Yeah.
So we're going to see that again, so I don't know how that would affect this year.
Um, I haven't, I haven't gotten any word from, from the E-rate folks. And actually, the federal government does not necessarily run that program. They do it through a contractor, so USAC is the one that communicates all the regulatory changes. And that's actually, obviously, a acronym, USAC, Universal, or other, I don't remember off the top of my head right now. So anyway, they administer that program and they, and they are really good about sending out information about changes. And that would be a major change, obviously, across the board. And I, I haven't seen anything, that doesn't mean it isn't coming. But I obviously, not having seen anything like that, I didn't, I didn't take any kind of.
Sure. The concern, it's not that it's a major change in the programming, it's a major change into who's actually filling out those applications to get those.
Yes.
And so that's, I didn't know if there's any kind of concern or accounting on that side.
Um.
I believe that goes into effect to start January one, or I thought it was school year. I don't remember, so that's why I was asking. That's what I want. That's what I thought, that wasn't because it's based on the taxes, or the tax year, or because it's a school program, it was school year, so I don't.
Yeah.
So Alan, in that particular program, actually, like many federal programs runs from July to the end of June. So many of these grants actually do the same thing. But I can check on that, I, I really haven't seen the information on it. And, and I'm not totally sure how a federal program is going to come in with the state changing their laws. And they might take it to, I mean, they may just not even figure that into their calculations, but. So just to mention, so one of the reasons why our home office is in Penrose, the president's office and the home office is because Penrose is in D-11 and not D-20 or one of the other districts, and they obviously have purposes of that, the higher numbers for us. At least more sure that it's going to, it's, we're going to pop out of the eighty percent that they offer at the top. FL, that is actually adult ed grant along with Ikla.
FL?
Well, I'm talking about the second one, the English.
IELCE, that's for our English, second language program.
Yeah. Lena, that's an early childhood development reading program that's been hugely successful. Parents are, from what I hear, in love with that.
Even my physician, his kid was involved with this program, and I had to share it before. And that's what he said, and now he's telling all his patients about doing a program.
Children's, it is, it is a very good program.
And, and while I'm talking about all these grants, I want to do a shout out to Lance. Because all this money touches the foundation, and he has a lot to do with many of the application process. He and Brett worked together, I assume, a lot of hours to harness the RHG grant, which is coming out of a museum grant system, so you wouldn't think we'd be able to, but they, you know, they were able to harness a two-year thing on that for our digital commercial aerial photos. The rest of these, you're, you probably, most of those you've seen before, donations, fun, fundraising. That's either actual dollars out of the foundation or grants that are coming through the foundation that were identified as interdepartmental. Or, I'm sorry, governmental. Moving on to the next page. We're showing a year-over-year analysis on the twenty-two approved budget versus what we're showing you today for twenty-three. So overall, on the taxes, we're still going to see a two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollar increase, mostly in property tax. Especially ownership taxes that, it's kind of like, I mean, the way I look at it, it's kind of like a sales tax. It's really not property, is a property tax of a vehicle, but it's, it's kind of a sales tax in a way, would you agree, Nicola?
Which one?
On the specific ownership tax, I kind of do that more as a sales tax kind of thing.
Yeah, it's obviously direct in relation to car sales. So you can see, as you see, our dealerships are the largest retail rooms besides the weight blocks, like Walmart.
Yeah, yeah.
And so as you see those trends go up, we see it's the same relationship tax. So that was very closely tied into the economic position of consumer spending. Obviously, that's been a, a little bit of a complicated, complicated animal with the, with the, the chips not being available and the cars not being available, and so backlog of inventory. So we did see a big push, and now it's kind of slowed down, but the anticipation is, once that inventory catch catches up with that demand, we'll probably, I would anticipate in the next two, three years, we'll see a push and then to start to level out it. Historically, it was about two percent over a year.
Yeah. And so we, she and I obviously talked about this, she, she did a lot of research with what's going on with the county and the city and how they were handling that. And I'm, I'm expecting this year to come out somewhere around three point five, three point six our October numbers, which we haven't talked about yet. We actually figured, hopefully, averaging out three hundred a month. You know, for the slight increase over at three hundred and twenty-one thousand for October, so, you know, maybe that'll, that'll end up being three point six. But anyway, it's, it's just all that information kind of rolled together, I thought it should back off on that number. Intergovernmental, I'm dropping the E-rate numbers a little bit because I don't know that we have as many projects on them, we've been able to do a lot of the tabling, a lot of the networking stuff, so that's probably slowed down a little bit. And I'm trying to give our new IT chief a chance to get his feet on the ground too. The other big one that you've seen here, obviously, that wasn't their last year's employee contributions, that's for the self-insurance fund. And only because it's, it really hasn't been presented in our budget document before, so that's, that's why that's there. And then the transfers in. We're demonstrating there that we're moving the capital out of the general fund and it's going over to another place. So that's what that big minus is down there in the bottom section. And again, you know, we're, we're breaking these out for a sake of transparency, we're trying to make this revenue number a lot more clear and transparent for where it's actually.
So your tabor in food fund, if there is a special placeholder.
I'm sorry, the tabor?
Yeah, if you have listed those zeros as a placeholder.
Well, so that's, that number's kind of driven by what's gone on in the previous year. And I, and I didn't see us getting a refund number back on last year's numbers. So it, it, from year to year, it's determined over year.
And we have to take action to make that happen.
Uh, well, it kind of, it kind of happens when we are going through this process for this year. We're, we're going to have to take what we have calculated our mill levy to be and put that down in a, in a couple of forms to the county and governor for whether we think we're going to get a refund or not. And with the numbers that we had running through this year, I don't think we're going to have a refund. Plus, any revenue you see for a refund here is from last year. So it's always kind of a month in arrears, but I don't believe, I don't believe we're going to.
Twenty-two, there, there is no anticipation.
Yeah.
But I guess what I'm saying is, the fact that we're not going to get something, shouldn't put a brakes on for looking at this.
Oh, no, yeah, that, that number, I think what you, the number you've seen there is more, it's a function of the actual process of, of asking or telling them this is what our mill rate's going to be. And, and actually, different places do it different ways, you could write them a check if you wanted. But Mike's method of doing that and getting that slide back and forth was to roll those into the actual every-year certification process. So if we owed them money or they owed us money, we would just use that form on an annual basis to push that dollars. It, it just fluctuates. So that, no, that doesn't have anything to do with all the detaboring and all that stuff that we talked about. That's, that's more a product of the mechanism of us dealing with that whole process.
So we're moving ahead, we're trying to get tabor, detabor.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, the, that number that bounces out there is, it's more a part of the mechanism of just running to where we're going to be for.
And that's the mill.
Yes. Can you, can you hear her?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've just.
Oh, it's really, I think it's.
The wind. My office is kind of like that.
I think, I think Randy, can you, can you talk just a little bit more about the transfers? And that transfer in, though it shows as part of last year's budget, that was not a transfer into the general fund. That is property tax revenue that was received into the general fund. But then the transfer in revenue line was actually a transfer in on the CIP fund. So effectively, the money, the revenue was coming in on the general fund, it was getting transferred out of the general fund as a three-million-dollar expense, and then recognized again as a three-million-dollar revenue on the CIP fund. So that's an accounting change, a budget change that we're making physician reward. So you, you see it as a reduction of a three-million-dollar, it really is reducing your base budget by three-million dollars, but not as a result of a reduction in activity or budget cuts or something along that line. It, or, or reduction in revenue, it's, it's an accounting mechanism, so that's when we try to, we'll see it when we get to the expenditure side, to see the other side of it.
Yeah, thank you. So, I mean, that kind of lends to the whole conversation about it being confusing for taxpayers. You all, it's written in a separate sheet.
Randy, can I ask?
Yes.
So it's the property taxes that you've got, is that property taxes minus any of the URA deferments that we're getting?
Yeah, I, I, I took calculation net, net assessed valuation, which, but that's what we typically do.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that, 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 that number is our budgeted actuals, not.
Yeah, no, I didn't.
Including all of the.
Yeah, I didn't go as a gross because, and you know, we've had these numerous conversations that, you know, you keep saying, we, I hear the same. You're like, you guys don't even see that, you don't feel it. Well, we do, but technically, because we're going with the lower number, that doesn't improve it, you know? But we all agree, it's like, well, yeah, if you're taking it, you have a bigger net number.
However, what, what the conversation you and I had last year, one, seven or six or seven, what's really important to understand is how that rolls through the tabor calculation is because you're restricted by tabor. That, that additional revenue will send you over your tabor cap, and you would have to, you would have to refund it or reduce your mill levy by that per rad amount, so you're not going to see it either way. So unless you detabor, there's no benefit in this particular climate of the trending for you to do that. Because all it's going to do is keep you over, and then you're going to have to reduce your, your, your.
And that, that's included if and indeed, because I know that there have been a couple of URAs where we agree to it, but they don't come forward, they don't go move forward with it, and so it just kind of goes to the wayside. So I'm assuming that that money is the money that we would usually get anyways, because it's just really the unimproved plan that we would get, we still get that property tax, and though it's not much, we're still getting that.
Yeah, I think one of the presentations, he said, yeah, you're, you're getting property tax off the undeveloped, you know, storage land. It's very small, but right there in summer.
All right, okay, thanks.
Any more questions? Uh, so the next, the next page is of just breaking our revenue into a pie chart and showing the major components. Obviously, property tax, eighty-six percent. Our next biggest one is specific ownership tax, a cut out about nine percent. Two other smaller pieces. Our historic revenue growth over time since two thousand eighteen, spent about four point four percent. Obviously, you can see, we've seen a little under eight-million-dollar increase there. The next chart is showing the population served. We, we concluded these, these are, obviously, these are things, if you look at, at the previous budget book, we did, we had a lot of comparative charts in there, but we went through that and leaned out these two, these next two charts as being very, it just shows where we're at as far as funding versus population and who we're trying to cover. So we're second in the state population-wise, only second to Denver. And then if you look at our revenue, revenue per capita, this page five and six, we are second from last, so we totally flipped on those numbers. So we, six-hundred-seventy thousand people, second highest in the state. You look at our revenue per capita, we're the second, next to the second, or the lowest, at forty-four dollars.
And, and these are, these are relevant, because if you're, if you're a citizen just looking at, oh, well, look, there, the budget increased eight million dollars, right? So it looks like four point four percent growth. But when you look at, we know the economic impactors, the CPI is growing eight percent, issue, when you compare that to all the other pieces, that growth is not, as we've discussed with table calculations, that growth is not keeping up with the cost of expenditures. And so that really kind of screams at you when you see, yes, you're the highest, you're the second to the highest population wise, and, you know, citizens served, if you will, but you're the lowest, the second to lowest for capita. So that's why that's relevant, so even though you see a growth, which kind of tie those pieces together, put it in perspective. Even though you're continuing to grow, and it looks like you've got additional, it's not enough. If the growth is not enough to maintain, to maintain the cost and to even be comparable, if you will, or competitive with all the.
These two graphs are, I mean, these three pieces of information.
These two graphs are, I mean, these three pieces of information are critical. Because, I mean, we've heard it from Delia, but you guys are getting extra money because you're growing all of those up before here. And look at these two graphs. You're, yes, but they don't bring in, we're not getting the dollars we need.
One of the graphs that Randy and I wanted to do, we just, we had some challenges with pulling in points of historical data. Um, but it's something that I still think we'd really like to get from you. It really tells more of the story is yes, you can see the revenue going, growing, but what and what is that trend look like with your revenue per capita? Is that actually growing? Because when I've done these historically for other agencies, that's not the case. So even though your revenue is growing, the per capita tends to decline. And so and that ends up with a crisscross chart. And so that's something.
Yeah, I'm just saying, those two charts together, that would be.
Yeah, that's because that tells, I mean, that tells a more accurate picture of what's what's.
Uh, any any question? Alright, so the next section, which I'm sure is the one you really want to talk about the most, is expenditures. So um, again, we're we're presenting year over year, last twenty two versus twenty three percentage of change. And basically, we start at the um, top of the rung, the library services group.
They're expensive.
So um, just just to talk totals for the uh, we're seeing eighteen percent increase there overall. Western region. And so the next sections of this are actual library operations. So the first part there is kind of uh, public services. Uh, we break out the the stuff under Kami's. Public services programs, uh, district wide kind of influence. And then each of the regions are for the library services, buildings, uh, people, you know, bookshelves, you know, that type of thing. Uh, so the western region, which you can see the locations that are listed there. And we tried to to make the locations geographically logical with the names we put on them. So you have the the twenty three O A B.
And here here how that works is according to budget statute, um, the balance budget that was brought over in October is officially called the preliminary balance budget. Once that's presented to you, that's truly shifts into the original adopted budget. So even though this isn't something specifically, like this isn't the done deal. Or that's why it's now we're in the.
So um, each of the regions, so the western region were showing eleven percent increase, uh, south southeast region nine.
Randy, there is a minus twenty five percent.
Oh, yeah, for you, you have. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so please. Uh, that's because we both asked into management or no.
Manatee, sorry, I get mine. Okay, so is that a?
So, yes, yes. So now they're all under one and that way anybody who's hired to work will work at either location they're trained to. Yes.
So was that added in to the manatee?
Yes, you, yeah, you would take the net of the twenty percent if this is managed inside. And then pass. You can buy. We talked about combining on the support. We wanted to make sure that there was transference.
So uh, so what I'm hearing you say then, uh, twenty percent that was cut from the pass went in to manatee, but there was gonna be a five percent cut anyway for me.
So that probably has to do with the number of hours that employees work. And since they're not just assigned to one location at twenty hours, we probably had a reduction in that.
The percentage of utility percentage is directly up to the the changes.
Well, I did see the.
Yeah, so what I'm reading the size is there was a cut of fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty past. And so many two springs would have had roughly fourteen thousand five dollars less increase, but because of the reduction, it gets rolled up.
And and there's obviously stuff that is physically costing stuff and you, it's just the personnel, which is obviously our highest expenditure. Um, is is next, I mean, it's like, I think we got what, one person, you? Yeah. Yeah, so it's. But I mean, we obviously still have books and and maintenance and some range and stuff like that. So but anyway, that's. Yeah. Oh, okay. I want to see out point four percent. So uh, continuing on with the regions, so nine percent southeast. North is showing twelve. Overall, for the entire library services, a group, it's ten percent increase. Admin showing a minus two, but as you can see, we've got a a big reduction in the interdepartmental. I talked about that the very first part of the meeting that we're um, pulling some things that were parked in the interdepartmental over into uh, an actual department of manager.
And really, the interdepartmental, and this is, and this is traditionally been done in is the intergovernmental tends to be kind of the 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 holding, the holding line.
Kind of the.
Where things, um, transactions come in and out. Um, and so, uh, and so, and that's, and that's you know, in compliance with, you know, you know, reporting and all your gases gap and everything, your last, that you can move things in and out through there. What what has been kind of a trend the last however many years is to really start to um, bifurcate that out, say, okay, but okay, you've got the speed line, but maybe this really belongs elsewhere. Or instead of flowing, because what you see here is a self insurance fund. Okay, your medical costs were in intergovernmental and they were transferred per se to the self insurance fund through that intergovernmental line item, but it's kind of buried in there with three to four million dollars worth of transactions. So what Randy and I actually were trying to do is to break that out so that we can very specifically say this, you know, this line item is eighty thousand dollars, this line item is seventy thousand dollars. So it's it's again, it's much more transparent through the process. So that's why you see such a large um, reduction in that. You'll see that in operational side as well.
Yeah. Um, just as we just talked about with you and and uh, manatee being kind of blind operation. Uh, you don't see column related on here, mostly because it it doesn't have any personnel. They're all monument movement over there and covering it. So that's kind of a joint thing there. It just isn't, we're not showing a column related with a bunch of, you know, very, very small members or.
Ask a question about the I T stuff.
Yeah.
So I seem to recall some sort of conversation, I can't remember who it was with, about moving people from the I T department to the communications department because of the website.
Yeah.
Is that what's reflected?
Yeah. That's a big chunk of that.
Right.
Um, the whole web uh, manager development team, all of that moved over.
Okay, I figured that's what that was, but I just.
And I mean, uh, you know, two mutations is right up above it. So you can.
Right.
And and stop, when we were talking about the money balance budget, you know, Randy and I were talking about bringing forward changes as they go, those essential items. And so in future years, what you could see on this, you wouldn't just see one changes column, you would see, okay, this is a, you basically, you'd see that broken up into parts. Here's where we're moving people. So you can see it kind of in and out, it has zero net impact. This is where you actually recruit additional people. So here's, let's say a hundred thousand, you know, or a hundred and two thousand two people in nineteen or whatever. That would be a separate column. And then the third column would be, okay, we want to do a process of working increases and it's gonna be this percent. And so you can see how that populates through. And that really takes a lot of this, a a lot of this kind of what's really happening with these models, what's going on with these.
Yeah.
You actually see those in three columns and then to arrive at your um, um.
It's more specific than than the general.
And so, I mean, that's the direction that we're going. Not like they're.
No, but like I said, we did, we made a lot of progress and and you saw that um, ways ago, but um, on the self insurance medical, um, there's a twenty five percent increase there. And I I know when I was talking in the subcommittee and all that, that the medical was a nine percent. So um, part of that, that's real world. And there's been real world spending this year that was over this budget amount that I got in our, you know, adjustment for later today that I'll talk about. So it's it's kind of like that's a artificially deflated number on the budget because at that point in time, we didn't know it was gonna be the way it ended up being. So anyway, that that twenty five percent is kind of a.
Right, part part of it, part of it breaks into twenty twenty two increasing.
Yes.
And the other part then gets.
Yeah. And the other thing, uh, Nick, uh, you know, in in us looking through the interdepartmental, uh, there were insurance things, the things that we felt probably really uh, needed to be in the self insured fund instead of out in the general. So that's kind of why that's a larger.
So the increase in security, is that the camera system or people or both or?
This is personnel, so. Yeah, this this particular slide is just personal.
Yeah.
With the.
Yeah.
This is budgeted based on the number of people that we want to.
Well, so.
Based on the F T E. I know you're gonna get to the. But I got a little ahead of myself because.
No, I know. We'll we'll jump ahead, but so we actually, good time to talk about it. Um, I I took a a reading on our headcount like from our last payroll. And the number of vacancies that we are still trying to fill. And we decided we showed no lift, not one person more next year than the. We've, we've got a hold of line with what we've got. Um, especially after, you know, we're we're trying to do something about inflation and pressure on our employees. And we're, you know, proposing much a higher increase than we've been maybe we've seen moving forward, um, to try to help help them out. And so we just decided we really, given the circumstances that we're in right now, we couldn't, we couldn't lift at all. We we still do have the vacant positions that we that we've had and and had su- some success in filling and other, other like we we make inroads, we, you know, three steps forward, two back, and you know. So uh, the number that I picked up the other day, we're at forty eight. Now that's.
But the security also.
Yes.
For like P N indicators and another uh, staff, that's why.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why it is. That's why you see thirty.
Okay, I just wanted to double.
For a period of time.
I I knew, I knew what you were saying. So I'm like, yeah, we are not adding any new positions.
Right, yeah.
Because we can, yeah, that's why. Okay, so when you said we're not gonna add people, are we not gonna, are we still trying to fill those?
Yeah.
Forty eight.
Yeah. Right, right. And obviously, you know, if if we're looking at that, you know, it's, as time goes by, you're looking at, okay, these are our needs back then. And so we may look at that and say, okay, uh, we can kind of work with that a little bit. We decided once ourselves, we changed our mind about that need and then we shipped. So that part gives us a little bit of flexibility as far as, you know, just if we had nothing, then I mean, there's nothing there to address, you know, sudden changes or even a necessary change and, you know.
But that administrative cut is just the cut overall in this component, right? As I'm reading that six thousand dollars, two percent, that's what we ended up with, a two percent cut in this area. Right?
Yeah.
Was it a trade or something else? It doesn't say that. I mean, if I look at everything, it, or was there? It did something, did this go somewhere else or is it just a street?
Yes.
It doesn't show.
Yes, yeah.
Well, I I think it's back to uh, moving out of the interdepartmental down to the whole separate fund of self insurance.
So that could have been part of that.
You're seeing a big push up on that, so.
Okay.
That's that's part of it. And moving these things uh, more visibly, you're seeing the movement over to this other fund that you really never heard about. I mean, we talked loosely about it, but I don't know that if you kind of knew it was a separate fund all by itself.
And and for for budgeting purposes, it was rattle in the general.
Yes.
On your, on your financial report, on your. On that, it is broken. And so in order to be consistent with that, and it's just, it's just much clearer. Be able to see, see, you know, an actual work moving again and it's. Trying to track the movement. Movement of the same dollar, basically.
So uh, our general fund overall um, increases eight percent of personnel and then for the total personnel budget. Okay, so the the next page, we're gonna jump ahead on this just a little bit, but um, that's our actual authorized positions and F T Es. And.
One of the other things that Randy now be efforting here is actually pull out. If you have a grant fund position and it's whether it's the September, what's ongoing, what's grant, and it's to pluck those out. Have that summer come out of autumn and then have that tied directly to the personnel.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's a new exercise.
So it's really clear um, about whether it's a one year, two year. Um, for instance, the uh, brand that I talked about earlier that the regional history um, is getting. That includes a person um, doing the digitizing of the of the photographs and they'll be for those for two years, but they're here because of the brand. So um, we're just, I guess, one way finding some very creative ways to get bodies in there with other required. So our total headcount uh, for twenty two, I'm expecting to see is including vacancies, uh, four hundred and forty. And like I said, we're holding a line on that number. Our F D's, uh, I still haven't found a point two person, so.
Well, does everybody understand that you've seen the the. Just actual bodies.
Alright, so the next section is the changes in our operating budget. So this is dollars on on the entire general fund. And then uh, self total outage to self insurance. But dollars wise, uh, public services is seeing a zero percent increase. Obviously, there's a minus twenty seven there, but it's it's.
It's like an eight.
Yeah, it's it's obviously too small a report. Um, western region, our dollars there is are dropping overall twenty five percent. Southeast nineteen percent, uh, northern is uh, four. Part of that's probably our our base number isn't quite as high as the other two, so we're in quite as much there, we're in as much room. Part of that's probably our, our base number isn't quite as high as the other two, so there isn't quite as much there, there isn't much room. Overall, for public services, we got a one percent drop. Work services, um, got a overall twelve percent in the general fund. Undesignated's five, I'm just running some numbers.
What, what's really assuming that, of course, Randy's in the finance office, you can see there's a little. Swidley, swidley, like, that's where we allocated from the intergovernmental, uh, we allocated that, um, half a million, uh, treasure fees on the repay to the county and that's a statutory fee we have to pay.
And it's bank.
Tax and then the banking fees. Because again, that was one of those that was just kind of lumped into the, that big multi-million dollars. But traditionally, that would fall in the finance office because, um, that would be a function of the finance office to, um, manage that. So, so that's, that's movement that you're kind of seeing. So if you could see it in the, in, in, in your departmental line, you can kind of see how that's a different cycle.
Yeah, I need some more room, Gary. So I wanna make sure I, I understand this. Thinking of the operating budget, we actually are going down fourteen percent. From last, or from this, right?
Yeah.
But yeah, we're budgeting ten percent more personnel, right? Is that why we had to cut a lot of?
Well, so ten, ten percent, or six percent of that ten is, is the increase.
Right, so tha- and that's what I'm saying is that, that negative fourteen percent is so that we can cover the ten percent increase in personnel.
Um, part of it. And, you know, it's, it was like, uh, a goal for us to do something on the personnel side.
Right, right. No, I, I understand that. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the bottom line numbers. I know we.
Yeah, so.
Capital budgeting or anything like that, yet the, but that capital fund, but I wanna make sure I'm understanding.
Yeah, so. That, that's, that's a big part of it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I just wanna point out on this, this, this line here that is sub total, um, total general fund, self insurance operating budget. That's just kind of a subtotal for comparative purposes while we transition to moving those, um, those budgets from the interdepartmental to the, um, the, to the self insurance fund. Those subtotal lines will be necessary moving forward. It's just if somebody were to pick up a bunch of book and try to tie it out, that's how you would tie it back to the choir again. So that's just kind of an FYI to, to have, you know, good trending comparative, but not, but not necessarily, um, and so, and so you can see overall it's a five percent. But again, moving forward, you know, next year, everything will align how we do this year for twenty four, so that will be this.
Let me ask a question about. Cause I am a little concerned about all these negative changes between last year and what's next year. I'm assuming that when we cut funds for operating, we're also cutting some programs, some offers. What are we actually cutting? We say we're going down ten thousand dollars in Saint Creek from last year or from this year to next year. What is, what does that actually mean?
They had a really skewed, um, supply budget for some reason. So for whatever reason, Saint Creek had a twelve thousand dollar supply budget line, which really doesn't allow, didn't align with any of the rest of the branches, especially of that size, and they weren't spending it. So we just took that, uh, those dollars out of that line.
Is there, not that I need this now, but I would like to know specifics about what we're actually cutting. Well, I know, but if it, if it's things like that where it's.
A lot of them ended up being also training budgets. And so training budgets were not consistent either through the strategic services side or the branch side. And so we aligned all of those to be equal. And so that, that, some of the cuts, the reductions that we had made, um, the.
I think I guess we'll, we'll be more happy to share this with them, like, which was the areas that we adjusted.
Yeah, and it's just, I, I wanna make sure that we're not cutting services. But we're looking at creative ways to find savings, like supply budgets or, yeah, training budgets or things like that, so that we're not cutting services, at least not yet.
When you look at the public services summary, it's, it's, uh, one percent and seventy thousand. And if I'm looking at this, cause I don't know what operation this is, it looks to me that there's reallocation to put dollars into library. And so maybe that's the change in what, what's appropriate for the, for the strategic, you know, operational goals that, that, that type, that type of thing. And then overall, when you look at the general fund undesigned, um, you know, where facilities getting such a large enough, it's actually a five percent increase. So when you look at it overall, it is, um, it is that five percent increase. Does that make sense? So the fourteen percent reduction that you see down in the bottom line, that's what you're gonna see a change in your budget, but that's not actually really a reflection of a reduction in, in overall operations because the primary driver of that is that elimination of that budget duplication of the operating, operating. Does that make sense?
I think it's easy to take a look at a minus figure and think it's automatically deduction. In fact, what we're looking at is redistribution.
Right.
So we've got the, the funds we already know we got, now where's it gonna go to, to best suit our needs, what's going on without sacrificing any services? And any people just points on, and that's kind of what we're reflecting.
But you're taking it out of somebody's budget and putting in somebody else's.
That's right, redistribution.
Like based on what. I'm not looking at bottom numbers. I'm looking at individual library branches. I'm gonna make sure. Maybe I'm not making myself clear, but I'm not looking at the bottom number. I'm looking at, okay, so we're adult services, we're reducing thirty two thousand dollars. And I understand that you may be reallocating that to somebody else. But what is that thirty two thousand dollars that we're taking out of the adult services budget and reout, reapplying it someplace else further on down the line? That, that's what I'm, I'm trying to get at. I'm trying to understand the individual numbers and not the overall number, because I understand the overall number. But I wanna make sure that we're not cutting services or anything like that that will directly impact patrons when they come into the library. So like, for example, like what Tammy said, if it's training, if it's, um, supplies, things like that.
Necessarily that we're cutting services, but we have reduced in some of the lines, we did reduce some of the budgets. And, and what that will mean is we will have to make determinations on how we'll spend some of those dollars in program. Right, but whether we have fifty make and takes or we reduce those to thirty.
Mm-hmm.
Because they are.
Things like that.
Things like that. So we did not eliminate any programs. We didn't eliminate any services. But we have made some reductions. But some of them, some of them, the budget lines weren't consistent even for the ta- same type of service. And, and that Saint Creek line was, that supply line was way out of line.
And that's understandable. That's fine.
And so that's why they, they didn't need to have them.
But you also see that at Shining, right? So, uh, are we, I, I kind of agree with, uh, with what Scott's saying, because these are big numbers. Got to the little libraries, that's a lot.
Right.
So, um, you know, if, if it's not affecting program, then, then is, where is that money going as we reallocate?
The other thing I would say, when, when the three of us sat down to go through these and do those final reductions, we looked at what they'd actually been spending and some of them, they hadn't been spending to what they had imagined. So that's, that's part of those reductions. And then Tiana had mentioned in the very beginning, like we need to look at that reduction that community diversity and inclusion done. You know, last year was the first year that we implemented that department. And so we have allocated funds the way we thought it was. We had a year. And so knowing how we're going to provide services and where our largest needs are, we reduce. They had, they had a significant amount of programming dollars, but we reduced that to a single line of programming in order to, um, move forward and reallocate those funds. And, you know, because that's how we just look at it needing to be served for the community in twenty.
I know, that makes sense.
Um, so I, I, as, as you guys are talking, I was looking at some of the individual increases, decreases. Uh, Nicola talked about finances explosion. Facilities had one too, but, uh, that is utilities. We actually, we actually, uh, are in communications with our account rep over there and that person communicated with, uh, Gary Schapp and passed on expectations for next year. And it, it was about a twenty three, twenty four, twenty five percent increase. Somewhere in there. So that is all going out to the utility.
So in the, in the final document, we, as we talked about, whether we should break it out altogether. If, if we're not actually increasing the, the operational facilities budget, it's always increase, then that is something that then, you know, can be further to.
Yeah, and I could, I could see the need to incorporate by department and then, uh, a category total like we had before. So if we were just shifting dollars around on supplies from location to location and nets to zero, you easily see that on that kind of, uh, display. And then the other thing that will lend some light on this is looking at our, uh, actual budget for twenty two, that's, you know, something we do every month as we're going through the year, looking at that.
So are there any plans to combine the Palmer Lake, Monument, upper hand budgets? Cause I see a line item for Palmer Lake five hundred. I know we're not changing that. It's like, since we're kind of combining people, FTEs for that, is that just five hundred for utilities? So you're still gonna itemize that, break that out amongst the two branches, knowing that personnel has already been combined into a single line item?
Um, I, I don't know that we've decided that that's gonna be a forever thing. Um, we just recently, you know, the city of Palmer, Palmer Lake just finished a major renovation on the front of that building and so. It's just something I think that, uh, I'm sure they're talking about it or trying to figure out if we're gonna maintain that, uh, a little more heavily or splitting people. Historically, there's, there's been a bigger number there for Palmer Lake and I, I honestly think that's probably something that'll turn. There'll probably be a need to have a, a person there like we do when you. This is just kind of something that's come out of a shutdown on that location for a while. This is working right now and we're trying to hold it one. But I don't see the budget line, even though it's very small on here. I wouldn't see a budget line going right through the lake. There is a physical location there. It's got. Not.
Does the mobile library services, does that include gas for the library vehicles? Is that budget item? The gas, you know, like gas repairs, things like that for the library?
Yeah, it should be in there. And, and as Gary would have asked, our, our fleet is, is getting, uh, quite old. We're in the process of, of building out a replacement right now, uh, which of course you guys know, a lot of that was funded with a, another brand. But, um, I mean, I see the repair bills coming through just like he does and, uh, it's a lot, we spend a lot of money on those.
Okay.
Um, the next year we are changing, uh, to look at is capital. And so that, but top one there, um, I've shown this in our monthly financials, it's, it's, uh, straggler amounts laying out there, a special revenue fund and it's, it's designated purpose funds. And, uh, basically it's just dollars out there, uh, that Gary is spending down, uh, he started the year, uh, this doesn't show up, but about a hundred and five and probably the end of this year, further down in here, it'll show where, I'm expecting to be somewhere around sixty five, something like that. But we're spending it down. It's just, you know, finding projects in there that will, uh, we need to do. Uh, and obviously, you know, talking about the different capital funds within the general capital fund. As you guys all know, there's a separate one for East. Basically, the regional libraries, East, Penrose and Library Tournament C. And then all the other capital, um, projects are rolled up into a capital reserve fund and then it's broken down into separate. And IT, um, a lot of that change, obviously, is we've got some network switches that they're, they're looking at buying and, uh, that was four hundred thousand. Yeah, three or four hundred thousand for that. And again, that's a great expenditure. Uh, telephone switches, uh, that, that might also fall under a great purchase. So there's some substantial dollars on the spend side that relate back to the revenue that I was talking about on the first page.
So on this page, on the creative services, just in creative services, like this past year was only fifteen hundred dollars. And so what would that encompass all the creative services?
Well, we're, we're sitting in a creative.
Service, a room, yeah.
Yeah, we're sitting in one of their rooms, uh, she's got three D, I mean, if you guys have never looked at.
Yeah, the three D printers.
Yeah.
So that encompasses all of that throughout the district.
Yeah.
I just need.
And, and just, yeah, and just.
It was also the fact that she was like the lady, if, to, and there was a plan, actually, if you will, in fact, the creative services plan, it's a replacement plan. How everything's organized, then there were plans to, to do it, and then before COVID, it, it probably happened. And there were some of the changes as well. And finally, they got around to about, to change those for the features because we've been having the other equipment as well, we had the model issues we've got. Uh, so that's, that's what it is.
And that's why. Yeah, okay, so that's.
And testing is more and more instead of kind of repair those three D printers.
I bet it is.
That's why we made that change.
Yeah.
And you have, Randy will get to a bit further into the document. We have this four pages of detail of every single object. Just as I, I'm sure he's not gonna go through it, but just as an FYI.
Yeah, and you were just saying we got a list in the back.
Right, yeah. It's, I think, it's, I think it's coming up after this next term.
Yeah. Um, another pie chart, uh, personnel, obviously, that's our, that's our biggest investment. Uh, and then operating and our capital for this next year, we're looking at two point four, uh, two point four million. Uh, and again, those are our highest priorities. So, um, Gary and IT both, uh, you know, like that to be a little bigger. But, uh, again, we're working with the constraints we've got. Spenses, uh, broke out by department. Our poem is, uh, public services. And then those other little slivers are everybody else. But all, all kidding aside, um, we're a library. That's, that's what we're about. We're about public. Public facing, uh, servicing our, our citizens and, and we are going to have a. You know, fortunately, a huge investment in that versus everything else.
And the percentages are off to the right titles, which is there's just too many.
So our total expenditures, um, the year-over-year change, it's looking. Down for all of the different.
This is just the combination of the last two charts.
Yeah, just rolling the labor, the personnel, the operating and the capital into one number.
Maybe before we move on from this, can we kind of talk about that my adult education looks like it's seventy six percent? But it's not really doubling of adult education. We didn't.
Oh, I thought that was Tammy's salary. Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Uh, so. Again, um, this, this is a place where we. On the intergovernmental, those, those two grants that Tammy mentioned, the AFLA and the English. Yeah, yeah. So that's, that's grant money and the cost for those grants is, is in the department. So. We, uh, we kind of, we, we have a system.
May I just, I'm sorry about that. Also, if you see that equity diversity and inclusion success minus five because. Uh, our strategic librarian who has worked for the district for many years, she has retired. So that's what you see back actually minus five percent fail accounts to that. So just to want you to make sure those big things work this awesome.
Yeah.
Some of it, and also the program too. Yeah. Yeah.
You, library, we, we kind of talked about that a little bit. It's a combination of managing and you.
And in moving forward again, it's, it's really good when we, we start to break out the budgets is actually having a restricted section here. So. Kind of see here's that restricted revenue and here's that restricted expenditure and how they, how they directly correlate. So that you don't really see that impact to the bottom line. And then it doesn't, um, there, there's not a lot of restricted activities or percentage wise with the library district in terms of restricted grants. So it, it's not really skewing your percentages and what budget have available. But it is really good to have those pieces broken out. Because obviously if the grant goes away, some of those expenses.
So then when you look at the Penrose on the facilities end, I mean, that's a lot of money that was taken out of there. Is there, is that because, uh, something that was going to be done at Penrose was paid with other funds or?
Were you on capital?
Right, yes. If you look, it's one new, right there, the last Penrose capital projects.
Oh, um.
That's a big chunk.
Yeah, so we, we put a roof on that.
Yes.
So that. Yeah.
Oh, so it wasn't.
That would have been the last year's budget, but. Gary has an estimate on the roof.
So that was from that. Okay. I, I kind of thought that, but I wasn't sure. I didn't get a grant for one room for somebody.
Well, so East, East was kind of our unplanned one, which was not in the budget. It was showing up in our actuals, you know, obviously. And then we had in excess of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in insurance proceeds. So.
I remember that, but I didn't know what.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, that's, that's a new roof.
We're not doing the project and we want to wait. Because if we wait too long to repair something, then it's going to be twice as much.
Well, and the other thing, you know, obviously, um, they do the same issues we do in our homes. If we're, if it's old and decrepit, it's going to start weakening.
Right.
So, um, you know, they're constantly, you know. Chasing that kind of stuff down on the older roofs to kind of mitigate some of the damage that we're going to have off that.
But sometimes it is, sometimes it is more perspective replaced.
Yeah. This kind of depends.
Pretty much on here, the total expenditure.
Sixteen, page sixteen, seventeen, that's where we, yeah. Did, I, I want to back up. Did, did anybody have questions about these specifically in a total form? That's kind of what this last set is. It's just totals of what we've talked about. Um, and then.
While we get out projects.
Sixteen, seventeen.
If, if you're looking at the total, this is really what, what you want to focus on. You can see in the summary, the two million dollar increase. That's really your net change in your budget moving forward from year to year. Again, the reduction, the renewal of that transfers actually would be deceptive in saying, well, we've really reduced the budget. That, that's not the case. It's really the two million or five percent. Um, if you're bored and you're talking about communication and then what communication that you're talking about, that's the piece that's really relevant to. And here's.
Yeah, so. So it looks like if I read this correctly, the total revenue is around thirty nine, our total expenditures around forty two, three, so we're about three million.
Yeah, we have those summaries that we just back in.
Okay.
It's an old piece.
Yeah. So, um. We can go through the capital project detail if you'd like, but mostly it's, this is a, an active list of what we had in twenty two. And as you can see, the, the number of items that were. Talking about pushing through for twenty three is, is much reduced.
There's that nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah. We say buildings. We read by buildings. Because I notice that a lot.
You'll see that on the twenty twenty three numbers and that's because there's not, as I've shaded, a detailed project list yet. So you see the detail on the twenty twenty two, but you'll see buildings.
Yeah, it's, if, if your question is, are we out there building buildings?
No, 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 no.
Just what specifically?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
What is that?
It's improvements. Yeah, I, I figured it was, but I'm, I'm assuming like for East, I know that they, or the asphalt needs to be redone. And so I'm assuming that that's included in that two hundred and ninety three thousand for East. So that's what we mean by buildings as a entire category.
Yeah, and, and kind of to answer your question, so as Gary and I were, um, going down for all that detail. Um, the, the budget system allows us to put detail in behind major line items like buildings. So, I don't know, Gary, one of these, we had thirteen or fourteen, uh, line items of detail, kind of that, what, where you're going.
Yeah.
Asphalt. And so, right, we've got it. We just didn't list it on.
I figured that that, you know, for is probably something similar for Penrose as well, so.
Yeah, and, and detail in such a way where, I mean, he and I were doing this off paper and on screen where, I mean, he's going through. Nope, yes, no, yeah, you know, and, and started out with twenty and when we got done, there was only ten of them that were going to make it through. And so I had him put that detail in there knowing to some extent they weren't, obviously wouldn't get off, but, um. Silver lining on that for them is now it's in the system and that projection can be topped forward and they can choose on the next one. You know, and kind of point to, begin to, they don't have to do as much of it.
So, if you guys. For all those items that you went through. Do you have concerns about what's going to happen? That may cost us more or we're going to do it. At this time. It's virtually possible. To where, like, throw in.
A lot of the ones that we cut out for Westlake, coming. To some projects. Two of those days, I'm checking. So, I'm finding those whole projects. Looking at some of the projects here. Brand new cars. Next year, I think we. Jay. Stuff. Stuff. Some projects. Um, so since we're talking about facilities, this is one thing that I didn't mention as part of. Uh, facilities increase. Um, I think the utilities ran MOLAT was about a twenty three percent increase. So part of the three that's left over is a facility study. So we. Yeah, we, we put five hundred thousand dollars in there for consulting and, uh, we spent some time talking to. To a company last year, I don't remember the exact timing on it, but, um, that had previously done some work with us on that to be kind of a ballparkish. Idea of what something like that would cost us. So, um, you know, it's, it's really important that we do that. As part of the money that we said we're going out to look, you know, to get is to, to do with our. Locations, where they should be, you know, and improvements and all that stuff. So we really think that having that kind of expert voice. Is going to be worth that spend. Then our total expenditures, uh, this, this is more just the twenty three, um, base budget. Showing you the personnel costs operating in capital all in one sheet.
I have a question.
Yeah.
You know, on, I'm looking page, page two, we've got thirty nine million dollar. Budget, total budget. And on page twenty three, we got a forty two, or forty two million dollar. Budget, which is what's going to cost to do what we want to do. So how do we reconcile that?
So that's actually in, that, that was Karen's same question. So. Once we get through all this detail, we've got some slides there and then the, the final slide is where, um. We kind of went through and did like the five year forecast and what that looks like. And that's really where kind of the budget discussion piece of this and the interactive piece comes in as to, because right now, you're correct. You, your expenditures do seem. Your revenue. So what does that look like on an ongoing basis? What are the impacts of that? What, what has to be done to basically address that, right?
Yeah, I can understand that. It makes some cuts in place or, or shift doing something this year and going to do next year.
Right.
So it requires some adjustments.
So that, we'll get that to the, the very, right. And this, this is, this is allocated based on, you know. All the detail that you've seen before, but then you'll see this in summary and kind of the pie level. And the goal of this is to take, you know, you're accustomed to seeing that really thick budget book that's got a lot of details, a lot of charts. And then you're kind of hunting and pecking for different pieces and it's hard to kind of bring it all back up to how does this interplay with the big picture? That's what we're really trying to do here is say, okay, what are the relevant pieces when we're still providing a comprehensive report with all the pieces? And the detail that's relevant, um, to use a board to understand where we're looking at. But, but also how do we bring it all up into a one, a, a one piece, a one, one picture, if you will? How does it all play into the total, right? Just like people with your checkbook right now. Your own budget.
We're over here having a table crisis because I keep pushing the table out on her.
So are there any questions on, this is just, again, the same information. Just in a different format. It just takes the five, the totals instead of showing the variances, it just says, these are the totals, this is how it breaks out.
All right, so, um, as Nicola alluded, we, you know, we're down to the summary and looking at a forecast of the future.
And this, and this chase all the pieces you see in detail now and shows it, you know, shows it in that, um, shows it in that summary and how. How it, how it translates. What is relevant for you is last year you budgeted to spend in. I don't know if it, if it works where that you budgeted to spend in one point seven million. What you see in the. What you see in the, um, budget book is actually like one point five million because that's just general funds. Because the capital detail isn't shown in the same format. And again, we kind of have to plug these pieces to bring it together. So you can see. The whole big picture together here at once. But you can see you already were budgeted to spend in one point seven million. And so with the changes, you can kind of see how that rolls out. It's one point five million, even though you had changes to millions. With the revenues and expenditures, the net impact is one point five million. So now, basically you add the two together, right? It's the, it's a three point three million. So that again is what's relevant and will show you kind of how that rolls through the budget as a whole. So this is, again, this is, this is what, what you're. What you've already seen, just all those.
Yeah, just roll up on one page.
Are there any questions in this format, I guess?
So how? So we were beyond what we needed this year?
Yes.
How, have we reconciled that or how is it going to be reconciled?
So that's, yeah, so we'll, okay, yeah, we'll keep going here. This is, these, these next two slides, maybe rather we just get to these quickly. This, this is the same matrix that you saw at the other one. This is just updated. It just, again, exact same information that you've seen, but how does it break down? And now we're looking at it just in a different format. Because everybody kind of, you know, appreciates seeing things in a different format and this just really kind of shows. So this is all the general funding, the revenues. They're not dedicated to a specific department. They just go into general, you know, the general fund revenue pool. And then here's how those pieces break out. Again, those tie back to the prior sheets. And then you see the net change in fund balance. You can see we're starting to give you fund balance and they'll be, and then we'll get into that because that's really where. The rubber meets the road, if you will. Um, and then this next slide is.
But fund balance.
The, the total general fund. And again, this is your, right here, this is your budget at a glance. This is the general fund revenues over expenditures and then your capital and your self-insurance and how that breaks out. So that's just another. So, are we getting to the fund balance?
Yeah, we're just, so the ending fund balance for, for the budget year, we're expecting, we're looking at that being for all funds, eleven million one.
And so how this is, how, how this is determined is you've got, we've got the audited fund balance, right, from twelve twenty one. Then there's the. Then there's the projected impacts, which is the actual activity that we've seen to date. So that will include what was budgeted, but then what's actually happened and Randy's got the majors and everything more later. And so what are the impacts of that? How does that really go forward? And what we project, obviously it's not going to be exact because there's still two more months of the year and there's a runoff period. But this is the best guess. What you see on those projected impacts is you see, again, money being moved from general fund to these other, to these other areas. That gets you your projected fund balance for the end of this year. And now we drop in the budget that we're talking about today. And what does that look like? And then that's where you get to, okay, now we continue to reduce it. But I think it's relevant, Randy, to talk about these, these various pockets because you've got one point seven, one point million, the one point eight million of restricted. So you can't touch that. That's legally restricted for one purpose or another. Then you've got the unassigned, you can see here. This um, this unrestricted, this is where you're really spending down the eleven point five million. To the five point nine million. I mean, that's, I mean, that, that, that's what we're seeing based on the activity of, of. Where, where everything was going to end this year and then what is in this, this current budget. Okay, so the special revenue fund, this is that little um, that's those little restricted pots that, you know, Randy said there's like six thousand left, we're not going to worry about that. That's for a dedicated purpose. But then you have the capital and this is relevant because um. You've got four point two, just to kind of understand how the parts are moving, you've got four, you started with four point two million. We're moving eight hundred thousand, bringing it up to five million to do these capital projects for this year. So you've got five billion, but when we set the twenty twenty-three budget, we allocated that three or that two point four million. Of property tax into that capital improvements fund to keep it whole, to cover that two point four million of expenses. Right, of those capital projects. So. This balance is, is standing strong at five million dollars. If, if, if I'm management and if I'm the board, that's dollars that's available to you that you say, okay. Maybe now we have to start making managerial projects, maybe managerial decisions, maybe we can't do those capital projects like what we talked about. Maybe some of these things need to, need to, need to, you know, on the shelf. Uh, maybe we don't do all them. Maybe we, we bifurcate it and we um, over the next few years, we phase it in, that type of thing. Um, but that's what's relevant here is because that brings your, your total fund balance to twelve point nine. So even. And when you take the, when you take the restricted out, you're at eleven point two. But your general fund is really only showing five point nine of that available because you've got five million in the account. Or maybe in the budget, an option here is you don't allocate. That, I mean, it's one in the same, right? You don't allocate. The two point four million of property tax to keep it whole, but you spend into that fund balance. And you put that money back into general fund to make up for that deficit. Right? And then we'll talk about how that rolls forward in, in future years. But this is a lot of information, but it's really important to understand how these, all these pieces play in to what's really available because this is, this is like your savings. The last piece that I did want to mention here is that Randy and I talked about doing an extensive cash flow analysis, right? Um, December and January will always be your tight months because you're waiting on that February property tax. And then, you know, that's like twenty-five percent and then you've got in April, you've got like whatever it's like forty-five percent. And then in June, you've got the other twenty-five percent. So those months you're doing pretty good, but it's that runoff period that you really have to make sure you've got cash flow. And then what, what is the appropriate reserve? What is the appropriate fund balance? And those are the things that, you know, we talked about with the preliminary balance budget, coming back, coming back to the board, maybe if. What amount needs to be pulled out of this eleven point two million to ensure you've got, you know, sufficient reserves and cash flow? Right? Because that's not pulled out of this shit. To just kind of understand all the relevant pieces with the fund balance.
So, I'm sorry, that eleven point two million that you're showing at the very bottom down there?
Yes.
Explain to me again what that means. Is that cash on hand or is that savings that we have? And then the excess spending that we've got would come out of that eleven point two million? Does that pretty much?
So the three point, three point two here that you see. Um, that's already budgeting for that to come out. So basically, at the end of this year, you should have about four point four million. So this is what we would have generally, you know, we close out the budget. Now, so if you approve this budget as is, it would go down three point one or two million and that would bring you down to eleven point two.
Three point one is the deficit between our projected revenue and projected expenses. But the fourteen is what we have sort of in the bank, so to speak, right? So that eleven million is what we're expecting to have with this budget. January twenty-four, when we close everything. Sorry.
And, and so yes, the eleven point two million is effectively your cash, but some of it might be a restricted investments. So you've got to, you've got to. When you do that analysis, you've got to take into consideration, uh, the fluidity of those dollars. Um, you also have to take into consideration how much, um, you know, how much you need for, for the cash flow. And then there's timing issues. So there's always reconciling items. With timing versus, you know, just like you have with your, you know, just like you have with your person. Um, how, how those, how those come into play. And so like if you were to look at your cash and your audit, it's never exactly. Right? But there's a reconciliation that Randy would give us on every transaction.
So I'm assuming that we know of that eleven point two million. How much we can actually use versus how much we can't because it's set in investments or whatnot? That we can't technically touch without.
Right.
Getting into huge fees and things like that at that point.
So that would be part of the analysis that it from, from historically, historically, what, what I've done, what I've seen done is you take into consideration. Uh, your, your necessary cash flow, right? And then you al- always want to add a buffer onto that, right? Because there's always that, though, and you understand that very carefully. Um, and then you take into consideration appropriate reserves so that if you have one type thing, like you do have a roof, something happens in insurance, well, he's covered. You want to have. Something along that line for emergencies. And then you, uh, and then you take into consideration the liquidity factor and what that looks like and how quickly you can move the money where your investments are staying, all that, all that type of thing. And um. You take all those pieces into consideration and then Randy would come back to you with, with that whole kind of the results of that. Analysis and say, based on this, this is what we recommend. This, we can't go any lower than whatever that amount is, three or four million dollars. And, and so that everybody understands in that three or four million. This is, this is what's included in that.
Yes, our, our investments are not. For the district. So. Full trust, which is the recommended investment instrument or elements. Not high risk. And I don't know any restrictions as far as. Uh, like personal accounts, you might have an account that has a thousand dollar, you can't go below the. Starting fees, I'm not aware of any restrictions that way. But obviously um. Emergency. Cash or money to cover our emergency taper restrictions. So you wouldn't. You wouldn't be spending below a certain level because you got to keep those reserves out there. And as she stated, that's, this kind of, we're not a cash basis place per se, but it, it runs heavily that way because, you know. Only we really approve at the end of the year is uh. Our. Lack period on our insurance is, is probably the one thing that we. Most of the stuff that I typically have approved in public. Uh, we handle during the thirteenth period. So when we're paying all this stuff for previous year, it'll roll out to February, sometimes March, where we're actually paying stuff in the current year back to last year. So that eliminates the need to be screwing that stuff because you're actually hooking it in there as expense. Uh, but. Yeah, the, the reserves that just come in place from the statutory. Then we've talked about, you know. Part of our policy, the board policy is of having, I think. In excess of fifteen, fifteen percent, there isn't really a ceiling on it yet. Um, but Mike would typically try to keep two, three months set aside plus the tape required. And then, of course, you got other restrictions, uh, gifts, grants and stuff like that. So you generally have not gone into the millions.
That available fund balance include our table reserve?
No.
Okay, thank you. No.
But I.
It's, it's not technically available funds, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to be clear.
And that's truly your only required fund balance restriction is your tape.
Is tape. Yeah.
If that, that's, that, that, that's, that's the only one that is required for um. And um. We can have a whole session about how that can actually wrap to the cash flow because you never actually spend it. Because it's just too difficult to essentially spend it, so nobody ever does. Um. But um. But so that can be, that could be a cash flow tool. The other thing that you see um customarily with property tax. Um, at our venture, I guess, the, the districts do this with um having funded property tax um. Agencies is they will, instead of doing their end of year runout through the end of January, they'll actually do it through February. So that then they have that property tax coming in. So because, because when you do the, because when you do the, the runoff and the closeout of the year generally, we have like two months for the bonus repay. So that increases, um, you know, your, your cash outflow. So a lot of people, like Randy said, they'll push it into February so that then they'll pay it out. That's a customer issue. So there's a lot of. There, there's, there's a lot of um tools in the toolbox kind of to, to kind of optimize that, if you will. Um, the management of capital projects, you know, okay, no, we're not going to pay a half a million dollar payment to a construction vendor in January, but we could probably pay that in April. So. I mean, if where, where possible, you, you time those capital projects to manage those outflows because those tend to be your kind of your big outliers. Um, yeah, there, there's lots of that and analysis that really. How, how to optimize. These values are.
So last page, uh. Nicola alluded. It's a forecast five years out. Best guess of what our growth is going to be on revenue lines and expenditures. And. Obviously, the, the thing to note about this is the ever declining um ending fund balance. With. Current assumptions, revenue and all that. So this, this is strongly suggesting that we need. Uh. Much to your point earlier in Dr. Stoll about talking about detavoring and uh different ways that we can infuse revenue into. Into our base right now. And from this picture here, it's obvious that we really need to do it. Um, even, I mean, these are moderate. Growth on these from year to year, five, three, five percent and. They're not huge and, and I don't, we didn't really like plan any. Um, extraordinary. Things happening in this five year period. I mean, you never, you don't really know what's going to happen, but what I'm trying to say is that this is kind of like a normal pace. And. And with the growth that's going on, increase expenses and, and all that, that. It doesn't, it doesn't get any better. Kind of what we're thinking, we're seeing.
So then, so, so off, so off to the right of these scriptures are a um. Is, is what the projected increases year, year over year. And so you can see you kind of start with where we're at, which lends to your, we have thirty, thirty-nine million and um. Uh, you know, we've got forty-two million, so we're spending in the three point one. Here's those fund balances and that's, this, that's at eleven point one. Um, it's not what you're talking about. This is where we'd be at the end, right? And so then you kind of keep this as a rolling. So based on this, I mean, it looks like your revenue is going to outpace your expenditure, your expenditure increase assumptions. By um, oh, about, you know, three, four hundred thousand here. But you're still at a deficit every year. So based on this, what, what you're, what, what it looks like is you are going from, you know, eleven point one million, you're getting down to two point three, two point six million. I, I, I mean, I can tell you just, you know, from. You know, um. Just, just from my experience, you know, you're not going to want to go anywhere near, a- anywhere lower than four million. And that's before you even go through the, the, the study. That's just kind of my gut sense on that. And so you, you can't sustain. What this does show is the two point four million of capital projects. Um, and again, the utilization of the five million that's in the capital fund balance. So that really takes care of two years of capital projects, but maybe you don't do. Um, maybe you don't do two point four million of capital projects each and every year. What it doesn't, what this doesn't take into consideration is it keeps all these, like, like Randy said, it keeps everything somewhat, somewhat stagnant, if you will, just with moderate growth, right? Um, it doesn't anticipate any emergencies that you might foresee. It doesn't also take into consideration, and I haven't had the opportunity yet to look at your data, but two point four million for capital, I don't know until you get your master plan done for facilities and then so IT does. I'm assuming some kind of, you know, similar assessment, what that looks like. So two point four million, it may say that, no, you actually need six million ongoing, right? So. So, so what does that look like? So now you continue to, you know, you never, you never really catch up, right? Continue to decline. Um, and then, of course, the fund balance is only available one time. And then I would also venture to guess based on the compensation stuff when I was trying to do some of the personnel analysis. The compensation study, I know there was an increase that was done this year, but based on, I mean, just what we, what we know is occurring nationally. And with, with all these different positions and the fact that, I mean. Uh, forty-eight percent of empty positions is more than ten percent. That's a, that's a high amount. I know we're in a unique environment right now, but that's a high percentage of open, of vacancies. So that tells me that you're probably, your pay is probably not comparable. So um. So my guess would be, you know, Tiana says you do, you do an annual, annual study every year and not a statement you go through every three years. So, but my guess would be when, when that next one comes forward. Um, it's, you're, you're going to show that you're even further behind. So the three percent is not going to cut it. And ultimately that's what eight percent, that forty-eight positions impacts operations, right? And we all know how that works with, you know, burn, burnout, turnover and, and having closed programs, if you don't have people just serve programs. So those are the types of all the pieces that have to be taken into consideration. Um, generally speaking. This, where you have this slide and you can kind of see the direction that we're going. What you build onto it is, yeah, but what's our critical needs out there? So we see that, you know, we're funding forty-two million, growing to forty-eight million over the next five years. But what should we be funding? We already know that for capital, we're behind comparatively. So. What should, what, what does, what does that amount need to be, right? Um, and so that is a piece that um, that, that hasn't been rolled into this yet. So, I mean, that's really the other side of the puzzle is. This is what it looks like. But what should it look like? Does that make sense? Now, I know we had the discussion about the taper. Um, depending on the year and the fluctuation of that, taper would address this. Um, because you would still have, remember your um mill levy restriction, mill levy restriction. So taper would address, a detavor would address conservatively probably around three point five million annually on this. So that's something, um, if you wanted to start running scenarios, you know, that's where, okay, you could say if we detavor, that would get three point five million. But again. What do we need? Do we need three point five million? Do we need two million operationally? Do we need, I mean, I think your mill request was for something around fourteen million. So obviously there's critical needs. Greater than three point five million. So what does that look like? Right? And how's that all set up? Let's, let's kind of bring it all together.
And in, in the budget, we did, there is an allocation in there, I would suppose, for us to consider the detavoring this coming year. Um, was that inclusive in there somewhere?
No, that, that is not in here.
So it would be an extra.
No, because it's going to be an ask in twenty twenty-three that would be applied in twenty twenty-four. So it doesn't, it doesn't take that to consideration in twenty-three. You can stop and don't worry about. Right?
I think what Dari is asking, budgeted for, if we budgeted for the cost.
To be.
To put it on the ballot this year. Six thousand. Well, five hundred.
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand is the.
Yeah, so if we.
But I wish like, there's a mini world.
Maybe.
Maybe they'll have some mercy.
So really would be two point seven in the hole, if we were to allocate. Yeah, if we, if, yeah, we had, we decided to do it. We'd either have to pull back on some things that we hadn't anticipated or talked about, you know? But obviously, I, I mean, I don't feel like we've got a lot of fluff at all in this.
Oh, yeah.
We have, we really kind of turned over every rock. Um, so Tammy, Tammy initially went out to her, her staff and said, you know, you guys this year have got to think about pulling back on some of this stuff and, you know, we all are living in the same environment here. And so it wasn't hard for them to understand that, you know, she wasn't just, you know, she was responding to what, what's going on around us. So, you know, pulling three hundred thousand dollars out of this without touching the fund balance is going to be kind of hard. But, I mean, obviously, um, you know, if that's ultimately in your, your, your decision-making process, you really, you know, that's, that's a, a solid um, possibility or a solid plan to be doing that next year, then, then obviously we're going to have.
And, and then I think if we're looking at this big picture as well, the two other components, um, I, I think that are relevant are, um, you should recognize some underspending associated with those forty-eight, forty-eight positions. You know, there is some of that built into the budget. Um, I think there's about five hundred and fifty thousand of anticipated um, underspending, uh, not underspending attrition savings associated with that. So whether that really, whether we realize that full amount or whether it's a million dollars or one point five million, that's something that will result in assisting your bottom line. On the flip side of that though, you know, Randy did such a good job of negotiating a reduced amount on the self-insured renewal. But the reality of that is, if those claims come in high, if, if those claims come in high, we have to pay them.
Yeah, that's true.
You can't just say, I'm sorry that, you know, we only budgeted whatever three, three million. And so, I mean, if those claims come in high, they're going to send us those bills. So depending on what you're experiencing, and I, I, I think, you know, you have an aging population in terms of um, your, your staff here. Um, you, you will experience, I, I think you will through the next three years, and then it should taper out, as you, as you trend that out. Um, and I say that from looking at the entire data from years. Um, but uh, you know, you'll, you'll, I think you'll experience claims above and beyond. And so I think those two, so those are two kind of outliers that Randy's going to have to track. And you would hope that, you know, that the savings of attrition will be greater than that need for the, for the medical claims. But to, for him to come forward with four thousand of uh, increase for medical claims this year, I mean, that's pretty, that's pretty significant. And those usually trend a few years before they kind of level out and then they trend down. Um, and that's just from twenty years of watching those medical trends.
Well, and to that point around the insurance, I mean, they just, our broker flat out told us that if you guys come in with numbers like this, where their expected number are getting next year,
There won't be a.
You're not going to get this, this number, you're going to get what we originally told you. Twenty-three percent. So this, this doesn't like look at that picture. Um, you know, so there's, she's right, um, vacant positions, like I said earlier, you know, we're going to continue to look at that, it's not going to just be a static number, so we're going to have to look at that, reevaluate. Um, we're already cutting hours and locations and stuff like that, so. Obviously, the, I mean, work begins in making this happen and improving it as we progress through the year.
I don't know, because maybe, I think that there were some MRA's that have been approved prior to meeting in the board. But are those all factored into this? They are? Yeah.
Well, because those are.
We never see them, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
That, that's correct, so how that comes forward is you have an assessed valuation. And then they take out the assessed valuation of the RA and it's a net assessment. And that net assessment is what you apply your mill levy on for your um, property tax revenue.
Okay.
So what we were saying earlier is, and we, and we, we can do a deeper dive on this, is until you detabor, even if you, and, and the URAs aren't significant enough, because most of them are in their like first year, first five year kind of tearing it up, they'll become more significant like in year ten, um, from the trending, you know, from the, the, the trending schedules. But if you don't detabor and you, you, you know, you, you didn't recognize those URAs, that, that assessed valuation would be too great of a number anyway and you'd be in ratchet effect, in, in rat, in ratchet situation with the real levy anymore. Because the revenue associated with it would, would go above and beyond what you're statutorily allowed restrictions of taper that you're allowed to collect. So it is kind of, it, it, so, so there's, right now, I mean, if I being frankly, if you move frank, that, that argument doesn't help you a whole lot until you detabor. Because you're not going to, you're interested in that. Yeah, at the point you detabor, yeah.
Then we're already locked in with all the agreements that we've already done. So if we, if we, if we manage to detabor this next year as a possibility, then all of the URAs that we've already approved up to that detaboring, we're still locked in for twenty-five years.
Yeah.
So we will never see that revenue until that URA is expired.
Has anybody ever showed you what the, what the value associated with that is in the dollars associated?
Yes.
Fifteen.
In fifteen.
Million.
Annually?
Um, no, that was overall from, I think until twenty forty-six, I think that's what that spreadsheet showed.
And it was fifty million valuation of revenue.
Uh, that was revenue, top property tax. That have been. Yeah, but over twenty-five years, so, I mean.
About three hundred, four hundred a year.
Yeah, it, it, and, and like you said, it, it does increment.
Right.
So the higher you get into the twenty-five year period, the more you're having to defer. So yes, at the beginning, it's like two, three, four hundred thousand. But I mean, even that, that's two or three, four hundred thousand dollars that we don't have in our budget. But eventually, after that twenty-five year period is over, we should be getting some additional funding, but it's not going to be enough if we do, if we don't detabor.
Well, I don't know about anyone sitting here, but to me, that's almost like a no-brainer. We need to do that. We need to put some funding somewhere so that we can detabor. So, so that we can, we start soon.
So I think that is a conversation for a future time. I think really the conversation, because that's not going to solve our twenty-three budget. We need to, to talk more about the twenty-three budget, I think, because I think that conversation, as important as it is, isn't going to solve anything.
Well, no.
Right now, and so I, I think we need to focus on on the current.
Yeah, our current.
The, the twenty-three budget more than the twenty-three balance. Yeah, and I think that based on those numbers, there's not much that we can do. Either, either we say we got to start cutting a little bit more, so that we don't dip as much into our fund balance. Or we take what we got.
But I think um, to Dora's point, is that if, if we need to put some money in for twenty-three.
Oh, yeah.
To run a ballot issue, then we, this is the time to do that as well, so.
And there's always, I guess there's always that possibility that we could rely on a third party that would support the library and raising some of that money, so that we're not necessarily paying it for, paying the full five hundred K.
So I think we would be responsible for the five hundred K, but any additional materials to help promote would have to be there.
So are we not allowed to accept donations that go towards the five hundred K?
Um, I, so, um, yeah, I think that's my question.
So I guess.
That's more of it.
That's why the issue committee, like, yes, for libraries, issue committee, those blocks, which was essentially a campaign.
But that would be the marketing.
Right.
In favor of not the.
Not the cost.
Five hundred K, yeah.
So there's, there's other factors that we put into the purpose for your budget. So there was a loophole that we conducted that is not being factored into in that five hundred thousand dollar. There's additional funds that we did put towards our budget this year in just trying to supplement awareness, awareness building and just support for the library in general. So that also is not being factored into it, so it's actually more than five hundred thousand bucks that we would need to consider if we're far looking at twenty twenty-three. Is there a, there's potential consulting fees, protocols, um, and other multi-factors that we would want to be attached on?
Which also when you think about twenty-three, the electoral elections are not typically.
It's a four-year to even consider going. And that's something that I think we have to talk about. And that's probably a separate conversation, but I guess that's related to the budget.
Yeah, because twenty-four is the presidential election, so a lot of overturn out there.
That's true.
Anybody answer any questions or comments?
Thank you both tremendously. I actually, the, the only, and this is just my opinion, I, I would suggest that the summary pages be done first.
Yeah.
Um, put first in the report, yeah. And then start going through the individual, because I know, I, that's what I'm interested in. I want to see the bottom line, I want to see how much in the hole we're going to be or how much we're coming out on top.
Yeah, and actually, we thought, I, I seriously thought about the flip side.
Yeah.
And uh, we got, I got late in the process.
And we had a whole discussion about what makes the most sense. And everybody, everybody likes to see things differently.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I would say is, is, is Randy's, is Randy and I are developing this. Um, obviously, I'm, I'm not here ongoing, but this, as I, as I help Randy develop this, if there's other things that you're like, oh, this would be a really good chart. Because like I said, you know, this is just to, this is just, in my opinion, unfair, I would never bring this report and say this is your budget, because.
Is that Mike's?
Yes. Now, now, this is, now, this budget book should be done, absolutely. This is, this is a, an excellent document, you can work through this. I mean, this, absolutely you should have it, but this is for individuals who really want to deep dive into every program and operation. And customarily, this is done at, um, in like, like in the springtime, the February, March timeframe, after you've closed out twenty twenty-two, so that, because if you go back to these historically, you're missing a year of data, because it was brought to you so early in the process, it wasn't, the, the prior year wasn't completed. And so.
I was just, uh, those of you who've been in my office in the last month or so, taking this, like, been panned out there along the canyon, um, what books do I have open on my desk, like, all the time? The budget books and the finances, they're on my desk, open all the time. And so I, I can.
Yeah, and they're, and they're a great tool, but.
It's, it is, it's a great, it's a great tool, but I think for what we're trying to do here, it's, it's not targeted for what we're doing.
Yeah, I like what you come up with.
This is.
Makes it easier to understand, and it provides the information we need to make decisions and recommendations, and it just makes it a lot more simple.
So I did want, so the timelines and deadlines that remain on this are, so the seventh, I'm going to be bringing, okay, so for afternoon meeting this, this today, I'll be doing the adjustments for this year, uh, which uh, internal affairs has already seen. I have had to tweak those a little bit, which is common. Um, so that will be presented and you basically be making a decision on that for this year and the budget for next year at the next meeting.
Right.
And, and then on the fifteenth, uh, I'll have blocked in the, the certification on the mill levy that we've talked about. And uh, resolutions, I, I, I'll have to bring a bunch of resolutions for the next board meeting. And I don't believe Dr. Stoll wants to sign them there, it's just, they have to be presented and yet it's assigned within a couple of days or.
Yeah, yeah, he is, yeah, he has, um, he does, he has a section for that, like, I think it's maybe.
Okay.
Um.
And that would of course include, um, I think, Dora or Debbie, I don't know which one of you, but at the beginning, the ending balances from last year, like the capital accounts. So I have, there will be all resolutions in there to roll that forward. And basically, you guys have to kind of reapprove what's out there and it's attached on to what we're talking about here.
Wouldn't you be the same thing for the board?
Yes, yes. And so the, the idea behind it is, um, Randy will bring forward two very simplified resolutions to approve the certified, certified mill levy. What will look different with that is instead of just seeing the one mill going to general fund, you'll see a little application chart. It's, it's, it's all, all statutorily allowed, same thing. Um, and then he'll have the certification of the mill levy, that has to be approved first. Then after that, the budget um, gets approved and they, statutorily, they have to be approved in a certain order. And then with the budget document, um, and then with the budget resolution, it would be, it would be a very simple budget approval document or resolution with this attachment, right? And then that, that should suffice for what, what is needed moving forward.
And then uh, next week, uh, so these numbers are worked off of preliminary uh, net assess, assessment, valuation, and their final should drop next week. Okay. So.
Well, they, they, they usually date it on the seventeenth, but you probably didn't.
Yeah, I, I, I was talking to Roger and he told me right before Thanksgiving. So if there are any changes because of that, you know, that, that number changes, then that would be incorporated into this. Hopefully that goes the wrong way.
Okay, any further comments or questions?
I do have a question. As you said, we should be doing a deeper dive into the twenty, twenty-three budget. Um, as we look, as I look at some of the general things that happen, are there any deep implications of of money allocations from the general fund into the smaller libraries, into the branches? Like, an example, family and children's services, you have that operating budget. Are any of the, are any of those dollars, could they be stretched out?
Yes.
Do they?
They already are.
Oh, okay, that's what I.
Because those are district-wide services, so when the programs are held or designed, then actually that the money, program, money operationally, they utilize, they use those funds. So what is, that's why when you see some of the branches, they don't have a lot of money programmed, because it's district-wide services are provided differently. So it's a great.
Because that's what I thought had happened, okay, I just want to make sure.
And even in that selection of those program choices, that's what those strategic services do, they offer that in a menu, the branches get to pick them. It's allocated, there may be one of the big three that's selected and then four of the smaller ones, and that's spread throughout the entire library district. So there's still equity built into that as well. And the strategic services tend to, especially if it's a big, big, expensive, maybe an author visit that's going to go to one big location, they've got a couple of smaller ones, they build that into that menu option. So they will tell all of the branches when they release the menu, that this is what the limitation is. There'll be one large branch that's selected and four small branches. Or they could say, there's five of these as an option, and then the branches get to choose if they want to be in that option. So they get to select what they're offering at their location, because they know what their audience is. But the strategic services are offering it across the district. To select from.
Now, are you giving a, a certain amount from year or, or just all year long, they can select?
It's built into how strategic services determines how to spread that. So they have that built into their budget. And then they determine what they're able to offer in this menu of choices that the branches get to choose. So yes and no, the branches don't really get to have, the branches aren't limited by dollar amount, the limitation comes with the strategic services budget.
Any other question?
Has this already been posted in?
No, it's.
Uh, are we?
No, but it's, the public notice has gone out, and so.
I should have, I should have said that.
Yeah.
That's what I was.
This, this will go on the website today.
Okay, cool.
And this, and I think just the purposes of proceeding forward, you know, we intend with this to be a working session.
If there was any discussion and proposed changes. Um, to to others who need to adjust things accordingly. I recognize this is a lot to digest, but I don't know what that process should look like.
Well, I, I got to be honest about it, since this is the first time a lot of us, in fact, all of us are seeing this.
Yeah.
It was kind of hard to facilitate any discussions that we had besides the questions that we already asked. So, um.
I def, I, we've got a few weeks before is the seventh. So I definitely think we just have to be kind of open minded about if we need to have, you know, a forum and a discussion. I think for this, so definitely flexible work of this, but I know you, your schedules are, are very varied, but we're, you know, we're, I'm wide open.
Yeah.
Stay off. So are you going to Denny's for Thanksgiving? Almost depends on the, the alcohol by my kitchen, right? So let me just ask general sense, I mean, are we more or less comfortable with that three point two number? Um, but I, I was gonna say, I'm, I'm not really comfortable with that.
Yeah.
But I haven't had a lot of time to digest.
Right, exactly.
Everything. Um, I would like to see that number, I mean, frankly, to a large task, I'd like to see that number closer to, but that's my, my part. I don't know what other people are thinking, but I know those are, that's, that's another significant jump in cuts. Um, clearly the trend that we, we have here is, is, is not a, a good or friendly trend. So anything we can do now to kind of cut it ahead, I think we need to, to try to do that.
Yeah.
We see the trend here and we don't, that's not something that I think we want to, to let get out of hand at this point. The more we can do to keep that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I fully anticipated that this would not be the end of this before this, the seven.
Yeah. So. All that to say, I, I know I've asked Taylor for a couple of other items to help me digest and, and one of the things specifically is understanding what programs are under each one of those big budgets and what kind of the dollar amounts are to those programs to understand a little bit better, you know, service is great, but like what does that mean for programs and what's the terror? Um, and so I, I think personally, not that I'm, I love having meetings, but I think having another working session where we have time to digest and split a little bit more information. Uh, we can have more discussion about what those numbers. Then we can feel more comfortable with this.
Yeah. Excuse me, sorry. So if we do have another working session, which I, I kind of agree is a good idea, unfortunately. But, um, is there a way with the software that we have, the new software, that we can make real time changes without actually making permanent changes into budgets? Is there a way that we could open up another copy of the budget and yeah, exactly, the type scenarios?
So this, the budget system allows us to, uh, do five, five versions of this thing and lock them in. Okay, so I just moved it over yesterday to the department level. And there's three levels above that and allows us to be in the board of trustees. So, um.
So, uh, my recommendation for simplicity sake would be to take something like what you've got right here. You can pull it up in an Excel format and then you, and then you kind of play in this big picture. So you're not getting into all, every specific line items, but you can just go in and you can say, okay, we want to cut. Um, we, we, we don't, we feel like we need, you know, whatever, operation, i- i- personnel or whatever. Um, what I would recommend based on facilitating so many of these types of discussions, uh, is that if you have a sense, like Erin, you said, I would be more comfortable here. You know, landing here, if you have a sense of, we want to get that three million down to two million or one point five or whatever, um, whatever number. Then you can give direction to, to management and to staff right now. And then they can go back and say, okay, and, and powwow with the directors and have more of a collaborative, um, cooperative discussion internally and have them come back with recommendations to you. Um, that really kind of says, I mean, and that could be as simple as, okay, maybe what we're gonna do is we're gonna table or phase in a couple of the capital projects. And so, Carrie, I'm not officially mega concerned, but you know, but, um.
Audio office person system.
But you know, maybe, may, maybe, you know, at least for right now, you, you, you table that or you phase that in. Or, you know, Taylor and Tammy go back to the, to the team and their, their team will say, okay, how can we tighten our belts a little bit more here and there and maybe these are.
I think that's what we often see why when you ask questions about that, we even want to have any services because we're depressed. Then we are in this situation that then we are going to make those decisions, right?
Well, well, but you could look at, other things you could look at is, is the number of hours. The big, the majority of, of our costs right now are personnel. Without cutting personnel. So. It's a possibility. I, I, I know that it might not be a, it might not be a popular possibility. But that will definitely reduce that bottom line red number.
I, I would be much more comfortable, um, and, and maybe we should just decide, here are three ways we'd like you to, to look at. Um, and I'd be a lot more comfortable with you guys saying, okay, if you want to get down to one and a half, this is what we're gonna have to do. We're gonna have to close these branches so many days away. We're gonna have to cut programs. I would feel more comfortable with you guys proposing that than us looking at a list of programs and going, well, I like this one, but I don't like this one as much. And that, you know, you guys know that better than I do. And so, um, but, but I think we're at the point where we need you guys to say, if this is what you want, this is what it looks like. And I, and I'm looking at you, Timmy, but not just you, everybody can, yeah. But, but that way we can really see what the trade offs are and, and it's hard philosophically to.
I think that's important. It's important to establish the fact that you guys are in charge of the operation program. What you've shown us in the budget are things you have agreed to cut back on. And what we're saying is, if we want to cut back on something else, what might you do to get to that point?
And we might not like it.
That's right. Uh, our job is just to look at the budget and say, it makes sense. It provides what we think ought to be done for the community and, and, and from there, but you're the operator. You're the ones that have to make this work.
So, so let me ask, where do we feel comfortable? I throw out two, and the reason why I said two was that puts us roughly about five percent up, that was the, it's not perfect, or we, one point nine, one point eight, something. Uh, but two's just sort of around the number. I, I don't know what the system board is. I mean, obviously I would like to do as close to zero as possible, but.
I like, I like the twos. I like the two, but I, I think that since we're looking at numbers, I think that we should look at one and a half, two, and two and a half. I think that would, and because we've already got the three, the actual budget that we're looking at. One and a half being two and a half. The best scenario. I mean, I agree, I'd love it to be zero, but I don't think that there's a way we can cut three point one million without cutting a lot of things. Um, but I think one point five would be nice. Um, am I gonna think that that's gonna happen without cutting services? Probably not, but I'd still like to see it. Um, two, and then even down to two and a half. I think two and a half would be better.
Couple of different scenarios.
Yeah.
To choose your.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly. Cause I mean, we've got this one.
Yeah, I think that's a good call.
But, uh, I know that, that puts a lot of work on you.
No.
And, and the leadership staffs.
That you, that, that's what you need to.
And then I guess if you could rerun for each one of those, rerun this model here to see what it would look like over the next five years.
So, so, so we, we could do that, but, but how this works best, because you could run so many different scenarios, is you drop the line items in and then you can choose the line items and then you see how it populates through the five years. And so you see that rolling number and then you say, okay, now I'm confident there. Now I'm comfortable there. Because the other thing that we, that, that if there is a true desire of this board to move forward with the, with, with detaboring and the majority of the board feels strongly about that, that's also a component that we need to drop in, which means ongoing, you won't have to cut as much until you know, you know, what the, until you know, you know, what the, the, the maintenance backlog, you know, the, the operational backlog, programmatic, all of those things, the personnel inequities, all of those things, until you have all those hard numbers in there. This at least gives you, you know, some kind of gauge, right?
Mm hmm.
So that's what I would say is don't forget that revenue component. Take to build it.
I have a, I have a question regarding collection. Um, I know that what it is is to, you have costs and about the percentage.
Sure.
The collections of this mission. So I mean, obviously we're going to change quite a bit rate of the budget. So maybe it's less than twenty percent. Right? Because if we're looking at cutting, making adjustments, so that's my biggest question.
Frankly, I, I'd be fine adjusting or putting something in there if that's where we need to make cuts. I, I would find, I mean, that's a different, that's a five percent, right? If you need to drop it to ten, I can. If we're making cuts.
Yeah, I mean, certainly something.
Thirteen percent is one of our larger.
Yes.
I know, I know, it's right. So if we need to cut, we cut.
But that's just a different type of scenario you could run.
But I mean, we, we just want to make sure.
I would say it's on the table.
Yeah.
If we're gonna do that, then let's not go down below ten.
No, yeah.
All right.
Not below ten.
But all of these things too, I mean, if we do end up at some point doing a ballot issue, I mean, people will have seen the results of, of not having the money and, you know.
But we can also say, okay, listen, we went through this.
We cut everything.
Cut what we could cut and this is, we, we run out of options at this point. So um, I think it goes a long way to both ways, right? We made the cuts and you've seen the results of the cuts. So. Yeah. So if, if we were to do the detabor, we wouldn't do it till twenty four, because I think we would get the better turnout by day at twenty four, which means that it wouldn't actually occur until twenty five.
Till you drop it in, in twenty five.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, I think that in all of these, there will be different scenarios to bring back to me and say, okay, this is where we have this. The next step would be to. We're working session like this, right? So is everybody comfortable to.
How much, how much time do you?
We need to.
I was gonna say, cause I mean, like, I doubt next week would be an option. Thanksgiving doesn't give you a lot of time, but we also have a couple. Thursday, I just said, no, that would be enough time for you guys to continue to do this. I'll find the minimum. Next week to sleep with someone else because my wife's gonna kick me out of the house. So as long as someone has a, a couch, I'm, I'm fine doing that.
I think they have one out here somewhere.
Is that a service?
So are we saying next week is completely off the table? So we couldn't even do Monday or Tuesday next week?
I just don't know if that's enough time.
Yeah.
Okay, so twenty eight? Can we do like the week of this sometime, the week of twenty eighth? A week of the twenty eighth?
Twenty eight.
Do what?
Please only the twenty eighth.
Yeah, I, I will.
I am wide open on the twenty eighth. So I can, you know, you're gonna be done that whole week.
Would that be enough time for you guys?
I, I could try to.
So that would be the one day after.
Be actually.
At least to do it. Yeah.
Because super service at this point, they have.
So.
They need to.
So, uh, my only issue with next week is that I was going to take some time off.
No, we're not. I don't think.
No, it's happening on Friday. Okay, right?
Maybe we do have, yes, right, she's.
Well, I, I'm just throwing that out there.
We could, we could favor it next week or the weekend.
The twenty eighth, I think is what we're looking at right now. I think Randy's comment was.
Debbie's gonna be gone that whole week.
A whole week?
Yeah.
Who's?
Didn't.
Yeah, so you can sleep at my house, cause I won't be there, but you can feed my cats.
Your cats might get kicked out of my house.
Or the week of the twenty eighth, you're gone? Yeah.
So would you be able to call in to a meeting or are you out of, out, out?
I'm in Mexico, but, um, sometimes it doesn't that works.
Yeah. You're gonna let us know when that, like, it's working down, so like.
Yeah.
Just a five minute notice.
As much as everybody loves it, like, could we look at a weekend maybe?
What did you say? I'm sorry.
Weekend.
Yeah.
The seventh is our drop deadline, right?
Right.
We've got to have.
Statistically, it's fifteen.
Yeah, we have that.
So we could have technically another subsequent meeting after the seventh to vote on the budget.
That's right. You could have your work session on the seventh and then you would just need to regroup and you could regroup for.
For the vote.
Fifteen minutes to approve.
The week of the fifth is, is hard for me. Uh, we have, uh, some weird stuff going on in the office that I have to. So I'm gonna have less avail, availability.
And that's a board meeting was at five P M. on the, on the seventh. So what I'm saying is you could do your work session that during that time. And then the next week you could just, we can need to, to, a little adoption.
So. So, okay, so you're saying just repurpose the seventh meeting to a working session for the budget and then reschedule the seventh meeting for the board to the fourteenth and that's when we could actually.
For the budget approval, budget approval, just for the budget.
It would have to be, it would have to be done on either the twelve, thirteen.
Right.
So that'd be so.
It's the fifteenth. That week is gonna be really tough for me.
On the seventh, the twelve?
The week of the fifth.
Yeah.
So trying to come earlier than five would be hard.
What other things do we have on the seventh besides the budget at this point? We know, um.
You, officer, the approval of the adjustments for this year, but by then, that's, it's gonna be.
That would be, to me, that would be incorporated into the budget. Um, let me actually approve the budget. So that could be, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what the best time would be if we did it on that evening of the seventh.
Oh, could be, yes, right. There will have to be somebody next on the sixth.
Yes, we could.
Just say, that's still, I did, yes, there, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm gonna be at the.
So if we.
New product that's on team.
Debbie, you are. So what if we make those changes and we could do, say, can have a group on the twenty eighth? You get to see the changes. We could set aside time to discuss them with you the, the six. And then you could discuss the concerns or changes you want with the rest of your board members. And then we could still do that, have the board meeting at the summit.
And then the seventh is easy. This is just a group.
And then that's.
Yeah, and you know, um. I know, I know Erin said it wouldn't be at in turn off ears on the sixth, but I will. So we could discuss it. Then if you guys have already worked it out.
I can meet at twenty. I'm wide open, so I could even time on twenty.
I'll have time to, but afternoon about this time, the two o'clock time.
That would be fun. I don't think I'm gonna be, yeah.
You want it later?
I can't do it on a Monday.
What about the morning?
That's my son's birthday. It's an all day event. This is what a school. He's homeschooled, so now.
It's an all day group.
Does he want to try out?
Uh, no. Yeah. So.
Twenty nine, what about it? Ninety nine?
I will be, I leave town, telling you.
Can you send?
I don't have to be at the airport. If you think you're gonna stand over in a jungle, wait for me.
Not today, I was, I mean, we're leaving to go through.
No, that's when I, that's when I.
What about, uh, what about one December?
How long are you gone until?
I'm gone till the fifth. I know, and I'm celebrating my birthday that week. So I'm not.
His, his son's only taking one day. You're taking a whole week?
Yes, cause I turned seven this year. So that's when I can celebrate maybe months. You've already done that one.
You've already done that one.
Debbie, when are you back in town?
What about, no one can do the first of that week and then do that same.
So that's two board members we want to have.
She's like, you and I're going to sit in that office.
Do Friday, but you know, yeah, it happens. So what about, what about the sixth? And not do it in the afternoon, do it like a five to seven, like. Okay, so I could do like, that's easy, I could do like a five o'clock on the seven.
I'm gonna make a recommendation. If we have a target, uh, we wanna reduce the budget by, or we wanna reduce this. Let's put together the budget, let's approve the budget, we're in compliance with our statutory deadline. We have the budget discussion after the holidays, we need to go to the. Because really our only, our only lock in here, our only statutory requirement or our, you know, our compliance thing we have to have. Is the approval of the budget, but we can easily put a, put a placeholder in the budget. You approve it knowing that your target is this and then you have the discussions and we can do a budget revision if necessary. Budget revision, but that way we've got our compliance fee because otherwise, you know. Right, otherwise, I mean, we, that, that's, that's been, that's been done in the past. And then you, and then you have a more focused, robust discussion.
So when, when you say that though, if we, in our. In our motion to approve, we have to say, we want it, we want to, uh, have that red line number. Between one point five and two point five, cause that's what we talked about.
You, you can do it as is, or you, or you can say right now, we want that negative three point one to be negative two. And we put a placeholder in the budget and you approve instead of a. What is that? Instead of a forty two point three, um, budget, you approve a, what are we looking at? Forty one point one or whatever budget and then we come back and make the determination. But that way statutorily, cause Randy's still got a certified mill, I think, we have to, we have to have, you, you have to have the budget. And then we can come back and have the detailed discussion after that.
I think it makes a lot of sense because I don't know how many times in the past, we've made changes in the budget at least two or three times. Because of one thing or another, so it's legally possible to do.
Yeah, absolutely. And, 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 and the process that we talked about is that's new to the board. In, instead of ju- just sort of one big mid-year at, at, in the fall, you'd actually do supplementals throughout the year to your budget. So this is not, I mean, it's, that, that's kind of the best strategy, I would say, at this point, because we are heading in.
Well, that, that makes sense. What, if anybody had any objection to doing that, it's like, uh, we go ahead and prove the budget that we have right now with the idea that we're gonna make. Some adjustments and we'll come back with at least two or three versions of the budget we can look at later on and say we wanna make an adjustment.
Well, and we, and we would just keep working through this.
Yeah, I mean. That's, that's fine. Um, I'm. I'm open to doing that. Um. I'm kind of a, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of thinking that what we've already done. Um, I mean, technically, we're not vote, voting on the budget till the seventh, right? So I think we should. Try to work as much as we can to get to the two, the one point five, the two and the two point five. Then on the seventh. Provide us ahead of time, whenever you guys can get those, those numbers, provide us ahead of time. That those revised budgets so that we can see what has changed. And then we can decide which one we wanna vote on, on the seventh. And then we could have our working sessions if we needed to. Afterwards.
And Scott, actually on the seventh, it doesn't have to be specifically, this, they, these are the options. We can put a placeholder, we're basically just a budget reduction line item. And we know that we're gonna, that we're gonna figure out where that flows after that. So you're, so the, the, the net budget that you're approving, or the final budget you're approving. Will be.
Where you want it.
Where you want it, that target amount, whether that's forty two million, forty one million or whatever. Um, that'll be at that target amount and then you go through the process, because otherwise I think it's gonna get a little too tricky with. Talking this one and talking this one, because ultimately you have to have a collaborative discussion with everybody together and everybody needs to provide direction. And then I think it'll create more work for Tammy and Tiana because, you know, Erin may have a question, she explains it, but then. You don't see that better with an explanation again and, and, you know, it's just better to have everybody in the same room.
I was gonna say, so. So what if we just had the seventh as a working session and I know. And then. If we have something, we can approve it or not, we can have a special meeting. Frankly, I, I've seen this stuff in other places, we can have just a, like a, not a physical. To get everybody here to, to approve it. So it's, you know, a short meeting, about a couple of notice, but everyone starts on Zoom on the Monday night, Tuesday night, whatever that is, the following week. And we go live there and approve the budget for the. So the seventh turns into a session since most people have that. That's gonna be a heck of a long meeting, so adding some size of working session to go through, unless we do something like we're just doing that. Or we come in at two o'clock and work from two to five and then do our regular board meeting from five till whenever we get done. Cause we still have a lot more things to discuss on that seventh.
Unless we just take out the budget altogether. So we have officers, we have slate, right, committees, we have to slate, uh, we have, um, I don't, I don't know what else was on that. Oh, yeah, yeah, by law approval and discussion, um. Things that I know of now, I don't know if any of the committees are gonna have policy updates or anything like that. For the fourth or for the seventh.
We could, we could not, I mean, we can, we should teach them about the policies we're, we're looking at. I, I don't know if there's a imperative that we have to go down if it's the board saying we're willing to take these to. Card out some time.
Okay, so if we wanna do that, then I say that we do at the very beginning of the meeting. We do all of our officers stating by law approval, get all that stuff out of the way and then the rest of the time we can just devote strictly to. Work session with the budget.
That's fine with me.
Maybe if we start maybe in four early, could we do four instead of five or is that cutting close?
On the seventh?
Yeah. And then I say we do it at High Prairie, so that Erin and I would be close to home and we can just get home.
I've gotta come from the office on that day, so. I, I could, I could do probably four, I could probably do four on the, on the seventh.
Okay, I mean, if, if. As much as I.
You know, we're making this pretty hard on itself. We don't have to do this in the same way. What you said was, was actually an option. That, uh, you put down, you're gonna have a change, but we prove what we got. And then we can do, when we have more time, maybe even January, come back and say, hey, look, we wanna do this and here's a change and we look at what you put it together. And we can say, all right, we like this one. And we have time and we're not so busy in the meeting of saying, okay, we like to do this, this is what we want to do.
So if we put a placeholder in there and we say we wanna drop it by two million dollars or two, two million dollars. And then they decide, yeah, that's cheaper here.
You just bring your, bring your budget.
Yeah, okay. So either way, if we then take it low enough, we can take it low, I mean, either way, it's.
Well, and then the reality of it is, I mean, your actual activity never rolls out, are your budgets. So unless you're talking about the significance way, let's say the half a billion. Um, we probably don't even need to do a budget revision, you just know it's there and then, and basically you just. You allocate out, you allocate out where that budget reduction goes.
All right, so what are we gonna do? Are we going to do the working session like we kind of discussed or are we going to? Meeting an hour early on the seventh?
Just gonna say, maybe it makes sense to ask the two ladies who have the heaviest weight here, Carrie, to get these scenarios pulled together and. Look at these, what makes most sense for them, when you use that as a.
And I like that as an alternative option. I would feel more comfortable if we could do a working session and, and just keep that in our back pocket if it starts to run low and. Do it, but I would rather have a working session with this course.
For the seventh, do we wanna have reports?
I would say let's not do reports on the seventh.
Do it, do admit, I'm sure Rita would be really happy about that, considering the last meeting she was there for the last period. So if we wanna do that, I'm, I'm completely okay with that. And we can do reports for January. That would include December reports. She just walked in, Rita would be really happy about that.
You missed it by that much.
Okay, that sounds like a good plan. I'm, I'm good with that, okay.
Or was the final decision five or four?
So is there gonna be two separate meetings?
Uh, I, I would say, no, I would just put the, a budget discussion or something like that as the.
It's a non-action item. And then statutorily, if you, you provide direction, which does require legal action, this doesn't require, I'm saying that. They, it's just a discussion and then based on that direction, then Randy updates his, his, um. His, uh, budget resolution. You just don't wanna push past the seventh because you do wanna have that out there posted for a week before approval.
I think we've actually.
Yeah, you just have to publish the resolution, not just the notice.
Yeah.
So, so that has to be finished. So basically you finish it from the seven, you finish from the seven, you'll have to go back and finish that decision.
Okay, we've got fifteen minutes before a board meeting, so I'm gonna call it to the, the journey here, so we can get ready.